All right, I'll call this caucus to this council meeting to order. And we all have the agenda in front of us. And is there any questions or corrections concerning the agenda? At the end of the meeting, I'd like to ask for an executive session. And we probably will not have action when we come out, so you can stay or not stay. It's up to you. But at the end of the agenda, we'll put an executive session in there. I have, what, four ordinances and a motion. And if it's okay with council, we'll do that in title only this evening. So without any objections, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its liberty, where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, could you hold call, please?
Mr. Duffett?
Here.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Here.
This is Oliver. Here.
Okay, so Mayor, do we have any proclamations or presentations?
We do not.
All right, we'll move on. Everybody has received admittance from the last council meeting. Is there any corrections or concerns with those? If not, the stand is read. Reading at communications, Mr. Neff.
I have none.
Mayor?
I have none.
Ms. Christine?
I have none.
And I don't believe I do either. Just comment, you know, the, um, the, wow. Public Works have done an excellent job on roads, I think, and for the most part, hopefully, we're through this winter and summer's coming and then we can worry about grass and other things. That's all I have. Wade, do you have anything?
Two things. Mayor's business forum is this Friday, March the 8th. It's our quarterly meeting. We'll be speaking with businesses on a number of topics. And then we received Tree City Celebration invitation. So the Tree City Celebration this year is in the city of Canfield. We have a Parks Board member who's going. I plan on attending. It's April the 23rd. I'll send out an email communication to the council with the date and time and kind of summary of activities. If there's interest in council attending, we have to have that notification back to and payment made by April the 8th. So we'd like to let it go through the requisition process as quickly as possible. So we'll probably expect something back from council confirming the attendance over the next week and a half.
Is that, this is, I got a card in the mail, the annual meeting of the...
That is for the E.C.S.A. Council of Governments. Yes, thank you for reminding me. So that's something we also put out to council last year to be able to attend. It's their annual meeting. The council member Neff and council member Tish were able to attend last year. It's usually a pretty good program, kind of talks about all things related to regional government and governing issues. I think it'll be beneficial. I can also include that in the communication to get a head count for that event as well.
Okay, great. Anything else for communications? Okay, we'll move on. Reports of committees, boards, city manager, finance director, chief of police, zoning inspector, and public works foreman. We'll start with Mr. Neff.
I gave a report last council meeting, so we haven't had a meeting since, so we're good.
Okay, great. Mayor?
Yes, I have a mayor's court report for the month of February. Gross collections, $8,694.09. Total to the state treasurer, $1,367.50. So therefore, that leaves us a net collections to the city of $7,280.09.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Oliver?
We had our meeting last night. We didn't have anything out of the ordinary offense. It's just a couple of repair items, that's all. And we also know that McDonald's is well underway of being completely removed so that they can clear off the lot and rebuild a nice McDonald's for us in the city.
I sit on the fire district, and I really don't have anything to report this evening other than our guys continually go through training. It's a continuous endeavor that we put them through. Equipment, I mentioned before that we are buying a new ladder truck that will come in in 2020, probably January, February of 2020. The MCCTC is building a, a fire building. I guess, lack of a term to use, is a facility that'll be out there that they'll use in their training classes for firemen. And we're, and the district will be able to use it as well. So it'll be a building that actually they can burn in and fight fires and climb and whatever, you know, training they need. It's just another, another tool. So that's all I have with the fire district. Mrs. Christine Clayton?
I filed the annual report with the Ohio State Auditor's Office for the Campfield Community JED last Thursday. We have to do that once a, once a year. They will only have an audit every other year, though, so it will not be this year that they'll have an audit. I've been working on the budget for 2019. And after the council work session last week, I still have some changes I need to make to that and some other things that we thought about in the meantime that we need to do. That'll be on the agenda next meeting. Tonight, we have a motion on to send income tax, taxpayers who owe us money to the Attorney General's office for collections. They will, they have the ability to take somebody's state tax refund. They can take lottery winnings in their collection efforts. So we've got about 34, 35 accounts we're gonna send to them to start doing that.
Nothing of a cost to the city.
Right.
Great. And they're delinquent tax accounts. They're just people that owe us money.
Right, right. These are, these are from 2016 and prior. They will tack on 10% and keep their 10% and send us our full amount.
That's, that's good.
Yeah.
How did we pursue that?
It was a pass. Probably we collected.
Trying ourselves, collected.
That's probably a little bit more effective.
Automatic if they get a recent income tax refund. Comes right out.
Mr. Ruff?
For the month of February, we issued nine permits for a total of $127,150. The bulk of that is McDonald's, as Christine mentioned. They're underway, they've been off the last two days. They'll be backfilling tomorrow and they're tapping sewer lines later this week. And going to water lines probably two weeks from now. And they'll be laying block by the end of this week or in the next week.
Wow.
They'll move pretty quick.
Wow.
Next Thursday, there's a public hearing for a sign at the high school. Anybody's interested in looking for forward adjustments, so I'll put that out there.
That's next Thursday?
Thursday, yes. That's at 6 o'clock.
Okay, all right. Mr. Kalu?
First up for Public Works. As you mentioned, the ice and snow control. We've had crews out cleaning up the right of ways on some of the nicer days. Through the heavy winds, a lot of trash has blown out into the right of way, so we policed that and picked up a lot of that trash. Crews have been on Bradford repairing approximately three sinkholes in and around catch basins. I think everybody's pretty much aware of the water break we had on East Main Street at Barnstone occurred on Tuesday. And then we had an additional break in the same line on, I believe, Thursday evening as well. So we've had two breaks within a two-day period. Both of those are repaired. We'll continue to watch that line. Other than all the normal activities, busy working through the backflow prevention program. And the foreman is currently running standard operating procedures for all the public works activities in anticipation of our new public works superintendent starting having a lot of kind of the standard operating procedures written. So he's brought up to speed as quick as he can by just reading instead of observing a lot of things. He comes with experience, so we don't imagine he needs brought up to speed on one of the things other than how we operate and can't do. For my report, the Parks Board at their most recent meeting, we've been talking about the donating a tree program. They've, I think, formulated a motion to city council to create the program and set fees for that program. So Mark will have that to kind of legislate what that actually looks like. I've started working on that program, so hopefully we can get that in this year. We've gotten communications from Millennial Moments developer. They are submitting their pre-skinch and pre-application to the Mahoney County Planning Commission. So they would like to start having the discussions of creating the jet board as quickly as we can. As we know, when Windsor House jet was formed, we missed out on substantial income tax for that construction because that jet board was not in place. So we, we'd like to get that jet board in place as quickly as possible. Again, that will take some coordination between us, the developer, and the township in order to form that board. So hopefully, we can get that, that done quicker rather than later. We submitted our loan request to the WPCLF for the sanitary sewer extension down to our Red Gate property development. We're basically at the point now where we just wait for them to approve our loan application and proceed with the next steps. And then finally, you should have all received our comprehensive plan. RFQ review committee met for potentially the final time, provided the recommendation letter, which is in your packet this evening, of the two firms they feel were most qualified for council to consider, which will most likely take place at next council meeting for the consideration and award of the comprehensive plan. And that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Counselor?
Yes, a few quick points. You have on your agenda tonight a contempt ordinance. We needed to do something with contempt, both direct and indirect contempt. And it really gives the mayor a lot of authority. You know, direct contempt is somebody who creates a racket, for lack of a better term, in court, in which case the mayor can summarily find them in contempt of court, levy a fine, and even jail if it gets out of hand. And then indirect contempt is, was kind of the genesis of the ordinance because we've had people not comply with court order, and we need to be able to hold them in contempt. And in that instance, there'll be a hearing, you know, where they show cause why they should not be held in contempt. So that's on your agenda, and I'd like to get that passed tonight. Also, working on some minimum and maximum setback changes for you to consider with what is up planning zone for us and the council in the Village Green B1, the B2, and the B3 districts. You know, the pushes to get everything kind of closer to the street parking behind. So we have to take a look at adjusting our setbacks relative to that. So hopefully, you know, that'll get through planning next month, and you'll want that on your agenda. And then Christine already covered the debt collection ordinance, so that's it for me tonight.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Chief Kaluji? A quick HR report, as the city manager mentioned. John Rapp, he received a conditional offer of employment from the city manager on February 25th. He's currently in that background process, and he's gonna have to go through everything we put everybody through, which is a CBSA exam, a background investigation, a BCI and FBI check. Formal investigation by our police department, and then physical drug screen, the typical elements of a background investigation. So he's getting ready to begin it, and we'll make sure we give you the best possible employee. From a personality perspective, we like him a lot. I think you guys will be very happy with him. I think the community will be very happy with him. And he's leaving Columbiana in great shape, which is good. Succession management was crucial for the city manager, and I hear out of him that he created that, and we believe we need that in Public Works, so we're excited about that. Since the job offer, he's completed everything. We've had, the conditional offers of employment or the conditions for the offer of employment, he's completed just about everything. The only thing we're waiting on is our background investigation. So the tenet of start date is March 18th, 2019. The city manager's gonna interview some of the public works, hopefully, next week, and they'll get to know him, and should be a good fit. Also, spending a lot of time lately working on policies and procedures. I've been working with different department heads throughout the city. And so far, we have about 16 city policies and procedures that are currently under review by the city manager. Once he gets through with them, we'll make necessary edits if needed. Then the law director will review them, and then they'll be ready to disseminate to the employees and certainly council to have a view of those. I'm definitely excited to get that together. So between that, the honor system, we've created a nice employee packet, an employee handbook. And so, and again, I believe that Mr. Rapp's gonna be a tremendous asset to everything we're trying to put together and building the best city possible. From police perspective, I gotta, I wish he was here. He sometimes is here. Mike Kavitz, the post commander, correct, Frank? Post commander at the American Legion. I have to thank you. Every year, he asks the police department or in the fire department if there's anybody that's worthy of intent of recognition. And last night at their American Legion meeting, they recognized three of our employees. There were people that we have recognized in the past here. It was Officer Mark Mashula. He received a lifesaving award. Dispatcher Pam Bazzini, she received a lifesaving award. Pam and Mark worked together. There was a man that was just about ready to check out, and between lifesaving techniques that were given over the phone while he was around and him getting there before the fire department came, they brought him back, and he actually survived. He's alive today. So that was a great story from last year. Also dispatcher Jessica Russell, I believe we recognized her right before Christmas with her commitment to the city. So she received an award from the American Legion as well, which was pretty exciting. So again, I want to thank the post commander, Mike Kavitz, because they didn't have to recognize our people, but they see it as valuable to the community, and he did a great job. So we were really proud of those three. Just to give you a quick debrief on what happened last week, most of you are aware there was a threat of gun violence within the Mahoney County Career and Technical Center. We received three calls that a gun was inside the school and there was about to be shooting. We also received a fourth call that was, well, the school received these calls. Fourth call was there was a bomb threat as well inside the MCCTC. Our school resource officer immediately got, was brought into the mix and immediately put the school on lockdown, notified the police department. We were there within minutes. We had the scene locked down, controlled. We also received the help from the Mahoney County Sheriff's Department, Campfield Fire Department. And we blocked every entrance. The schools, every classroom was secure. Nobody was in the halls. It was locked down. It was, it was as we have trained. And so we searched every student. We searched every locker, every part of the building, cars in the parking lot. And there were arrests that were made, but had nothing to do with the threat of violence or something. The chitma been there in the parking lot. One kid refused to cooperate with us, so he got arrested. So they did a good job at the school. As hard as it is, I was like, I'm probably the sixth or seventh person there. It's hard for me to sit back, but I gotta sit back and oversee everything that's going on. And one of the best phone calls I got that day was Sheriff Green, who offered the assistance of his employees. They sent 15 employees to the school, 15 deputies, female and males. The females were critical because our female wasn't on duty, and we had to search female students. So three female deputies, they did amazing. And of course, the fire department helped out. So the bottom line was, we had the phone number and with the, so one of our detectives, Brian McGovern, he's outstanding at networking, and we have great relationships with the FBI. They assisted us in tracking the phone and the phone numbers. And it was a 19-year-old male. His name was Anthony James Kazmark. And we arrested him the following day. It was a group effort between the FBI and our department. He's looking at multiple felony charges. He's looking at a maximum of five years in prison. And we did a, we were asked by the media what it cost us because they knew that all of our resources were tied up. So we had at least 13 people. The sheriff's department had 15 people, the fire department, the school. It was a total resource deployment of $16,000 plus, a little bit more. That's a rough estimate. So that's another reason. One, creating the panic within the schools, inducing panic, because it did, you know, parents, they want their kids. You know how that goes. And just all the resources that were tied up out of that school because this 18-year-old wanted his girlfriend out of school early. Yeah, we could lie and not think of this, but over $16,000 in resources, and we were all tied up a lot more, so.
Chief, isn't it true you wasn't even from here?
No, he's from trouble down. And we arrested him and warned. Our people were out and warned. And then another thing, our detectives, like often, I find it so hard to compliment them because I just, like, I prefer that they humble them up and roll situation, but our group did an amazing job tracking him down. It was a priority, and we know it was a priority for the community. And I kid you not, as recently as two hours ago, every time we go to the school, we get a, they clapped and they applaud, and they had a 100-person safety committee meeting, and when we walked in, they were clapping and applauding. So it sent some really shock, thick shock waves through you and through the administrators and the people that are in charge of those students out of the school to get a threat that there's gonna be, there's a gun in the school and there's about to be shootings. So everybody worked great together, and I think I covered just about everything. And then we made bond, he's out of jail, but everyone's aware of the urgency to prosecute this case.
Is there any, there's no way that they're gonna go back for restitution?
I wouldn't be one bit surprised if, I mean, the prosecutor's office could easily do that and put that tag over his head, so yes.
Was the young lady involved in any way?
No. She had no idea, and they have every reason to believe her, so.
Chief, it's unfortunate that these incidents has happened, but when they do, it really magnifies what we have here in Campfield, and I commend you for that. I mean, I'm always said, we have the best of the best. You have a stroke, and guess what? That fire district is at your door, and you're probably gonna survive.
Yeah.
And we have an incident like this, and our police are there, and it's done. And this guy, he had to be shocked that.
He was working on his car when we, when we found him.
So I commend you, and I just thank you for the great job that you do.
Yeah, and so like, we, the sheriff's department was the largest agency. They were the obvious choice to help us. But if it was an actual school shooting, we had 30 cops there, I bet there would have been close to 100 there very fast, so. Although we're small, we only have a school resource officer and three people, three officers on the road. We'll have a large, a lot of people, officers there, well, so. I'm really comfortable where we stay with school safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. At this time, I would ask, anybody has any questions, council? If you have any questions for these board reports that you've just heard pertaining to only these board reports, and if you do have a question or concern, that you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record and ask your question or concern. Okay, hearing none, I'll move on and move on to persons desiring recognition of here before. Counsel, I have nobody on my list, but I'll ask if there's anybody. Hearing none, I'll move on to old business. We have new old business, and so we'll move into new business. I do have four ordinances and a motion, and we'll do that in title only. As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of same upon its first reading by the second.
Thank you.
Second, Mrs. Oliver.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that camp field dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorize reading by title only. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Neff?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Neff, could you do a, for me, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to adopt ordinance section 501.14 contempt, and I move for passage.
I have a motion. I need a second? Second. Second, Mayor. And discussion. We, we've talked about this ordinance for contempt, but you want to expand on that or?
I don't believe so. There's, Mark covered it during his report. It allows the mayor the ability to hold people in contempt, indirect, direct. That's my discretion.
Okay, great.
Happy to give the mayor this amendment, so.
Great. Mayor, I appreciate it. You understand what this is and you knew about it?
Yes.
Okay, so Mark?
Yes, I think it'll help.
Okay. Okay. At this time, if there's any questions or concerns from residents, that you please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
2019-13.
Thank you. As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that camp field dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second? Second. Second, Mr. Neff?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorize reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Oliver?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver, could you do B for me, please?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance creating the position of public works superintendent and declaring an emergency, and we move for passage.
I do have a motion. I need a second? Second. Second, Mr. Neff? Wade, this public works superintendent, this is, we're declaring an emergency so that it's immediate, we can bring him on. The start date is March 18?
18. Yes, so as Chief Kaluji mentioned in his HR report, we've concluded the interviews. A conditional letter was sent and accepted by the candidate. He's going through the process, anticipated start date of March 18th. So in order for the candidate to start, one, there has to be the position, which is created by council ordinance, and the emergency nature is typically when an ordinance is passed, it takes 30 days to become effective, with the start date of the position being before that 30-day period is, is the nature of the emergency for this ordinance.
Okay. And do we, we have a salary for this individual?
We do, and that will be on the next ordinance that's passed, pending our salary ordinance.
Okay. All right. At this time, I would ask council if they have any questions. I would ask citizens, if you have a question concerning this ordinance, please come up, state your name, address for the record. Okay, hearing none, Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
2019-4.
Okay, thank you. As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Oliver?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorize by reading by title only. Do I have a second? Second. Second, Mayor?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor, could you do C for me, please?
Sure. Mr. President, I have an ordinance amending ordinance 2018 to 22, adopting salary and benefits for all full-time and part-time, non-bargaining unit employees. I move for passage.
I have a motion. I do need a second.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Oliver. And discussion, Wade?
So again, as a result of the creation of the Public Works Superintendent position, we now have to adopt the salary for that position, and we have one other adjustment within the IT department. You'll notice the change, you know, we now have information technology matter, we have two. So we promoted an internal employee to kind of attack IT from a dual-headed monster, allow that to manage specific areas within IT. And other than the Public Works Superintendent position that's created, there are no other changes to the salary ordinance.
Okay. Counsel, questions? At this time, I'd ask, any resident with a question, please come to the podium, name and address please.
Good evening. Frank McKeer, 220, glad to have you. Can someone calculate the total cost of the increases in employee salary for all city employees from 2017 to 2018? Or do we know that number?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Did you make that available? It looks like there's some substantial increases. I know the past city manager was like $75,000. I know way it's worth every cent of the increase, but it looks like there's some big increases. I'd like to know what the cost was and what the percent increase is.
So the total, the percent increase from 2017 to... Sorry, 2018 to 2019, or are you...
No, 2017 to 2018. Be interesting to hear what that number is. And that would include the new IT guy and a new public works director, which is probably $120,000 or something like that.
2018's not gonna take that out.
Okay, okay.
2017 to 2018, and it's not a new IT guy, it's a promotion from a position of IT Network and Systems Administrator. So it's not the full cost of the $73,000.
The person was already being paid.
Correct.
Yeah. If you send Patty your specific questions, we'll funnel it to Christine to calculate whatever number it's your request.
I'll just sort through you, so that you know what's going on.
Well, I'll see you, the right Patty handles the public information.
Any way you want is fine with me.
I would prefer to do it through the public information request.
You got it. Through Patty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank. At this time, I would ask if anybody else has any questions or concerns? Okay, Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay. As per the provisions of Section 4.05, Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that counsel dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Oliver.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
As per the provisions of Section 4.05, Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that counsel dispense with the requirement of a full reading of proposed ordinance and authorize reading by title only. Do I have a second? Second. Second, Mr. Neff.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
And Mr. Neff, could you do D for me, please?
So this is the brush pickup?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'll ask the question after.
Yeah, let me get a question in a second.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for brush pickup, and we move for passage.
I have a motion. I do need a second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor. You have discussion, please.
So this has already been budgeted and put out for bid, right? So we're just approving that we continue this agreement?
Yeah, that's correct. Well, we're not continuing. So annually, we bid for brush pickup that occurs in the spring. Last year, we had one firm that bid for one single year, another firm bid for the... We always give firms the option of bidding for three years out. The firm that was the apparent low bidder here was the one that won the bid last year for the one-year contract. This year, we received two bids, one from Hackett Tree Service, the other from Bear's Tree Service. Both bids are in your package for the evaluation, you'll see.
Gotcha.
And so, we're gonna go forward with the three-year brush pickup with Hackett Tree Service, which we believe is a substantial deal, and if we can lock in those rates for the next three years, again, we budget it, the next three years, we know what that number is.
I have a question, because I was asked this recently. How do people find out when these bids are going out? Because I was specifically asked by a landscaping company last week if we have anything coming up. Where do they find that information because they wanted to bid on that?
So Patty posts them in legal notices in the Vindicator, and through that legal notice, a number of outside vendors that basically put bids out, picked those up. I don't know the exact websites or different kind of vendor lists that people can sign up for, but it gets picked up by, I believe, at least two of the online kind of that business purchasing contracts that they pick up. Any city, township, village, store district, when they put out the bid, they have kind of like a clearinghouse that houses those. But locally, we advertise legal notice in the Vindicator. And this bid was advertised, I believe, we advertised here, it's on January 16th, that's when we first advertised the bid. And then we had the deadline of March 1st, which we received the two bids that were presented in the package.
Thank you.
In the future, will we do that on the website, too, announce it?
We can definitely put that on the website, yes, sir.
I think that's a good idea, because many people don't get the Vindicator, and that is why I feel like we don't get very many, because people aren't aware.
At this time, I'd ask, any resident, 4.05, Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that counsel dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed motion and authorize reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Oliver.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Do you have a motion for me, Mrs. Oliver?
Mr. President, I have a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General for the collection of delinquent debt over to the city, and we move for passage.
I do have a motion. I do need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
We've kind of talked about this, you know, it allows us to utilize the strong arm of the OAG to collect income back debt.
Sounds like a much more effective way to get the job done. Okay. I would ask, any residents, if they have a question, please come to the podium, name, address for the record. Hearing none, Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
2019-4.
Okay. At this time, I would like to ask the committee that did the RFQ review, if there was any comments or concerns you could share with Counsel at this time before, you know, we were gonna make a decision on that. That's not a lot of chance.
No.
Anybody from the committee? Eric? For the record, could you just say your name and address, please?
Eric Axelson, the Design Review Committee. I just briefly, Mr. Morvay, I'd like to go over how we got about getting where we're at. We had a committee set up, there was a pointer. Of that committee was the mayor, Counsel, Mr. Neff, myself from Design Review Committee, Rachel McCarthy from the zoning, and two citizens, Tom Danko and Matt Belker from the public. We got together, we came up with the RFQ language at one meeting. It was put out for bid and advertised. At a second meeting, there was, after 30 days, there was five different proposals that were received. At another meeting, we all went over all five proposed proposals. We all rated all the five proposals based on multiple items. We did so independently, and then we added up the results. After the results of the five, we found that one, in fact, was very low in the ratings, and we eliminated the one proposal. That left us with four. We decided that how many we were going to interview, and decided to do our due diligence, and we interviewed all four people with live presentations. All four people, over a period of three days, came in. They had approximately one hour for presentation and questions. They all went through, and actually, the ratings changed a little bit after we saw their live presentations. After all the presentations, we got together for yet another meeting. At that point, we went through and again rated everybody. At that point, the ratings came down to two different companies. And of those companies, we took a vote on, and we received... Four out of the seven votes were for the HDG company, and the three out of the four were for MS Consultants. That was the final conclusion, and the other two companies rated less than that. So we decided they would be... To give counsel, of course, can choose any of the five that they prefer. However, we did a lot of due diligence on it, and we came up with the two top, HDG being number one, MS being number two, and we're giving those to counsel as our recommendations, and you can do with as you please, however, those are number one and number two choices.
Did anything stand out with the... You've narrowed it down to two. By the way, I want to thank the committee, Tom, Phil, the committee for this job that you done. I mean, it was excellent. I mean, you guys put some time into it, and did your due diligence, and appreciate it. And I'm speaking for myself, but I'm taking your recommendations on these two companies that are up before us. Was there anything that stood out with you that, you know, maybe we should look at one versus the other, or what kind of direction there?
It was interesting that when we went through from the written proposals that were given us, and we rated them, we found that our rating system came out different than when we saw what they had to say, which I found rather interesting. They weren't dramatically different, but they were different. One of the things is that when people give a proposal, you get to see a little bit more of how they feel about everything, and they expanded upon it. We limited to what, 15 pages, wait?
The proposal itself, yes.
Yeah, the proposal itself. So now they had close to an hour to give a proposal with slideshows and everything else. So once they got that chance to go over everything, it was more apparent to us. A lot of people just had better presentations, basically. They all seemed to go down the same route. Everybody had the same thing. They were gonna talk to the public, they were gonna come up with preliminary plans, they were gonna set up committees from the city, they were gonna give them input. So in that sense, everybody had a lot of similarities. Some just did it better than others. Some had some little bit unique ideas. One of the biggest things that we saw as a committee is that some people spent some time addressing both Millennial and Red Gate, and others didn't. That was a big item for us. We feel that those two projects are going to be a major aspect of the city in the future. So the people who brought those up, I think, gave them a little bit of a head up above the others. Also, everybody talked about the 224 corridor and traffic. They had a little bit difference of opinions on some of them. Firstly, all of them talked about the bike pathway. They wanted to take the city green and connect it to bike path. That was interesting. Some people had different ideas as to how to alleviate traffic down 224. We had a lot of discussion as to whether they were viable or not, and whether they were good or not. A lot of great ideas, one of which was, I believe, MS talked about another exit off Route 11 down in West Bruce, correctly?
No, Leffeywell.
Leffeywell, thank you. To take the tough traffic down Leffeywell, then hopefully off of that 446, and then around the city. That was one idea. Another idea that I don't remember who had it, I think HDG said that another great idea would be to take off of fairgrounds, have a backward car washes behind Perkins and behind the gas station, have an access road, similar to what they do in other cities like Columbus. That access road would go down and then dead end into, what's that?
Better Hill.
Into Better Hill. Into that road, and then they would put a traffic light at that street where the old Advance Auto was, and eliminate the one at Towson. And they're also thoughts about doing the same thing behind the new McDonald's and having an access road there, trying to clear up that traffic. Firstly, everybody had said that was the area of problems with traffic, was just around that McDonald's, that Towson light. Everybody had mentioned that that's just not right, that there's problems with it. Some people have suggested that they just reprogram the traffic signals. I found it interesting that no one of the five suggested widening the road, which I was very thankful for. I thought that was gonna be a problem, but all five said our city's, you know, great the way it is. Don't widen the road. Some talked about it, bike path, walking paths, that kind of thing, but nobody suggested widening that. So traffic was a big item amongst all of them.